Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. And a meeting has been noticed per all legal statutes everywhere and all replaced. Fantastic, thank you very much. Is there any public comment tonight? I didn't receive anything up here, so we will say not. Thank you all for coming. Appreciate it. Uh, let's look at the consent agenda here. Everybody have a chance to take a look at the July sixteen minutes of the meeting. Everybody look alright? How about the July tenth meeting? We had, uh, that was a closed session meeting, there wasn't much to put on there, but that looked okay. Alright, vouchers. We'll move on to the vouchers. Everybody get a chance to look through them? Any questions or concerns about anything? Hearing none, we'll move on, um. Let's see, approval of treasures report, the assets report. Did it change much from last month?
Angie, just go through and look at the percentage here today and see if anything looks off.
Now, I noticed on.
Busy basing just because I didn't pencil your start.
Yep.
Yeah. Now, there was a, uh, last month, we made a motion to move, was it three hundred? Three hundred thousand. But I thought I saw something in there was a four hundred thousand dollar.
It was, and I questioned that as well.
Oh.
Yes, you had already approved one hundred thousand?
Yeah.
And so it was an additional three hundred thousand.
So it all happened at once then?
So made it four hundred thousand.
Okay, that was, I thought, did I remember right or not? But, okay. Um, expense report. Anybody have any concerns about anything they sell on there? Not, and then we have the revenue report. Are revenues still coming in from?
Our, so this is where I get to be experienced. Since our wonderful state changed how they pay out school districts. So our final payment comes in July. It was really for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, even though that, the school year ended in, on June thirty.
Something about that, you were fighting for some.
Yep, so, and one of the reasons many of this, because luckily you guys have, are such good financial shape. Most districts, like my previous district, we'd have to borrow two and a half million dollars every year. Because your first payment doesn't even come to you until January. So you have to run your business July first through January without getting any revenue.
But how much is supposed to be coming in, do you know?
Uh, we got our final payment for last year and that's where the revenue comes from.
Okay, that was it, okay.
Ticket managed to do something with, you know, taxes coming in, who, you know, some people that they have.
Oh, the real estate type.
Yeah, so that has an effect on it too.
Alright, anybody else have anything to say about any of these items? Well, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda then.
Make a motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second, hold in favors, the aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Well, that is a long employee handbook. I got in it this time, I go, wow, that covers everything, and then some it seems.
Um, I will let you know that I did not write that employee handbook.
I did not either.
Who did? It was like, wow, this.
Um, someone took a lot of time. It's, it's the most thorough employee handbook I've ever seen in my.
Oh, is it?
Uh, yeah, and the reason I'm asking for approval, because it does have everything in the kitchen sink in it.
Yeah.
There's not a question that you can't find in the employee handbook. I do, I will say that, uh, going forward and probably next year, you'll see a much smaller handbook. Because I think one of the problems with a very detailed handbook is it's so detailed that you can't make exceptions. Um, because it's written down, it's, it's the handbook. Kind of what, uh, Angie talked about last week about, you know, if it's written down that, hey, people can bring their own devices. You can't tell them not to bring devices.
Okay.
With the students.
Yeah, yeah, with the student. So, so this is a very, very detailed, I did make a couple of changes. I'm just a firm believer that all districts should really be supportive of our employees. The previous handbook had one, one day off for bereavement. And I think if, if some of your mother dies, or God forbid a child dies, or someone that's out of the state, two and one day. So I changed it to three days bereavement leave, so it doesn't affect, I just think that's humanity.
That's more in line with what's standard to.
I, I think so also. So I changed that, and then I, I did go through and changed the name to my name, being the person to call. So other than that.
Good idea.
Other than that, I mean, I did read every, all sixty-seven pages. But again, I think.
I share it with them.
It's very detailed, but it's, it's very well written. So I am asking that the board do approve, or does approve the twenty-five, twenty-six school employee handbook. Um, every employee does get it, they do have to sign off. Um, I don't expect every person to read those sixty-seven pages, but they're signing off that this is an employee handbook for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And then we'll work through that throughout the school year to get one to set up for next year.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six employee handbook.
Motion in a second, all in favor, seeing by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? There we have it. I had a hard time getting to the last page, I mean, it's just like another one and another one and another, I go, wow, this is amazing. Oh, camping trip, that's something that's done every year, right?
It is.
Yep.
Um, so I, first of all, I'm thrilled that the honor school district still does an eighth grade camping trip. Because many school districts have taken that out of their curriculum. And I think it's one of the, I did it as a teacher back way in my West Penn days in the late nineties. Um, I did it and I thought it was wonderful for kids, and many districts have said that, well, you know, blah, blah, blah. We're all about testing and stuff, no, we're here about having kids grown up to be great adults and doing this helps them. So when I found out from Angie that we still do it, um, I looked at it, we changed the dates. Um, that fit better for you, I believe, right?
Yeah.
Um, so with that, from their recommendation, I bring it to the board that you approve the twenty-five, twenty-six eighth grade camping trip.
So it's like, uh, two days and a night or something?
It's three days and two nights up in the city of Pointe.
And it's a good incentive for kids that choose not to behave.
Oh, you use it as a lever kind of?
Oh, a couple of kids could not help.
Good in terms of, to graduate too, right?
Exactly, it's a fun eighth grade and a year trip.
Alright.
Make a motion to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six eighth grade camping trip.
I'll second that. All in favor, seeing by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? On they go. How many are in eighth grade this year? No?
Thirty-five.
Oh, that's a big camping trip. All fit in one bus easily though. How many, uh?
It's smaller than last, it's a bit smaller than last year's, isn't it?
Last year was a little better.
Uh, two years ago, so it's great, last year was similar. Uh, there's three of us, three sure.
Wow, on time.
Third floor.
Yeah. What are you going to do?
I haven't been asked yet.
Well, that'd be fun.
I agree. As long as it's like the Holiday Inn Express.
Right.
They don't like petting it?
It's their kettos.
Finally got a hot water heater back in my house today, so.
Oh, you got a rock.
I had to go do, take a couple of cold showers the last few nights.
Boy, that rain came down. Uh, next month's October, no?
Yep, so our board meeting is scheduled for October fifteenth. The problem with that is we don't get finalized data from DPI until October fifteenth. And that'd be a pretty tough turnaround from getting it in the morning to bring it to the board meeting that night.
I think that sort of happens every year, we kind of push that off though.
So.
Do we do our annual meetings?
Yes, that is the annual meeting. So I, my, my request and ask of the board is that we change the October fifteenth board meeting to October twenty-second. We'll make sure to publicize that quite a bit, and that is our annual meeting. So that will be in the, in all the newspapers and everything else, that that's our annual meeting day and our budget hearing day.
Were we talking about changing the annual meeting last year, thought to earlier September possibly?
How can you do that if you don't have all the numbers or the budget?
Well, that, um, I thought.
You, you can, you can remember.
It wasn't about the budgetary. But there was, there was people that were disgruntled.
About October meeting?
Yeah, it should have been earlier September.
I think, because you just said October fifteenth.
Well, we.
That's for.
Yeah, for.
The budget would stay in October, but the annual and the approval of.
Okay.
The borrowing, the school board wages, I think, um, what else?
All that other business of the school board. So would there have to be two public meetings then, one in September, one in October, one for the budget, two for everybody, or not?
No, it counts as your budget hearing, but you're given preliminary data that can be updated at the October board meeting.
Is that advantageous, is that something you want to?
So maybe we honor and do the annual meeting in September.
I'm, I'm indifferent either way, honestly, I just know there was grumbling last year about it, yeah.
I would think individuals would like to know more solid numbers for budget, rather than, oh, here's what we think. I mean, that's what would be my idea.
No, yeah, but I mean, it wasn't anything about budgetary.
Oh, right.
And what I'm talking about, yeah. It's just the, the basic, um, rules like that are approved for a school board.
I would never govern it.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, well, that, that annual meeting, I don't know, budget really isn't discussed much, is it? I can't remember now.
Typically, I think we always did throw that meeting because of October fifteenth day.
Yeah.
So what should we do this year?
I would just bring it up for discussion, I don't know, what do you think, Michelle on it?
I think it's not a bad idea to do the annual meeting in September with the regular board meeting.
Yeah.
And have the budget in October, on the twenty-seventh.
Maybe it's, I don't know, maybe October meeting a little less long than two, I guess, I don't know, split up some of the work.
All of it, but try it here. Do you have any feedback to get there too?
Um, I, because it's this early, I think that's probably, you have to give enough time, there's, there's notices that you have to give out. I think it's like fifteen days for the annual meeting. But if we, when is the September meeting? I think it's the, the fifteenth?
No, this will be the third Wednesday into September yet, right?
Right.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, so that gives us over a month, so that we can make that happen.
Okay, well, I don't, do we need a motion to do that, or is it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
So what I, I guess what I'm asking then is that you change the se, you change the annual meeting to September seventeenth. And then the school board meeting for budget adjustments to October twenty-second.
To push that back.
Yeah.
I make a motion to have the annual meeting in September, along with the board meeting on September seventeenth. And to change the October fifteenth board meeting to October twenty-second.
Second. Okay, any other? Scott looks like he wants to say something.
Nope.
Nope. All in favor, seeing by saying aye?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Well, let's give her a go.
Alright, thank you, we can make that happen. Um, the next one is a, more of a discussion item. Um, and that is, I, one of the first things I heard as becoming the superintendent here is that everybody's really interested in the buildings and grounds committee. Or in the buildings. And it sounds like there's been a lot of talk here and there, I met with the PTO today about a playground. Um, and I think that's a great idea also, but I said that needs to go through, through the board. And so I would love to sit down, um, and I'm not even sure who's on the buildings here, and I know Scott is, I don't know who else.
Well, Scott, you're the chair of the building committee, right?
Yes.
And so who's on there with you? Off the board here?
No.
Like, who, who, who's all on the building committee per se, do you know all the names?
Oh, I'm sorry to interrupt, so you have a separate building.
Committee.
Committee, so not a buildings and grounds board committee.
Uh, well, okay.
See, I was assuming, sorry, that's what you get for assuming. Um, there was two board members.
I learned my lesson too.
Yeah. So I do believe that what I'm talking about is a, a district buildings and grounds committee meeting, which would be, uh, two board members. I would invite Chad, we can invite, uh, the committee members that you have to that meeting, just to have a discussion. Really, what I really am looking for, I talked with, with Chad Smithman, that I want to kind of get an update of what's been done over the last three years to both buildings. And then, in his mind, what, what, what's necessary for this building, what's necessary for the intermediate building. I know there's discussion in the community, I'm not sure with the board, because of the failed referendum in twenty-twenty-three about is there, you know, are we going to do that again? I know that's a discussion that we all need to have sometime this year.
Sure, sure.
But regardless, there are needs that in both buildings that, that should come from the buildings and grounds committee to the full board saying, or I, I'll just make them something up. I have no idea the last time you did air conditioning updates or something. But if there's an air conditioning issue that's going to be a twenty-six thousand dollar cost, you need to know that, so that you can tell me budget for this.
Right, right, right.
And so that's, that's what I'm looking for, that buildings and ground committee from a district level. But we can definitely, it's, it's an open meeting to, it's just like a school board meeting.
This is kind of like, I'm thinking we're duplicating something that we might have, it's just not called the same thing. Because Scott, your, your group looks at the buildings and has Chad involved with some community members, uh, anybody can come, but it hasn't be notification.
Correct.
To go out.
Yep, it's, it's a district meeting.
Anybody can come to. You discuss building and grounds, or just buildings, or what do you discuss there?
We haven't done one yet.
Right, understood, and you've been wanting to get one on the topic here.
Yeah, I was just waiting till we got clarity up and going and.
And the, my understanding was that this building committee would then bring recommendations to the board. For what we're looking at this year, next year, or year after, whatever, whatever.
We can definitely do that. My, my suggestion, I was just looking through my calendar, is that we set a date for, I have three possible dates, August twenty-seventh, September third, or September eighth. So the August twenty-seventh, third are both, um, Mondays, the eighth is a Wednesday. Um, I can make other dates work, but I just, I want this, we need to put it on the agenda. Because I, what, from what I've heard in just my three weeks is, that's, people are.
Well, let's hold this meeting and see if that fits the bill of what you're thinking.
Yes, I agree, no, I agree one hundred percent.
It's gonna be fine.
Yep.
Do you want to take some time to review those dates and then get back to Mary? About what works for you?
Sure.
Yeah, because as long as, okay, um.
I have.
Not telling you what to do, but you can make a motion to say, you know, Scott's gonna contact, he'll, he'll contact the committee, get a date that works for everybody. We will notify it early enough so people, because what I found in other communities is, is some people, if they're not on a committee, they want to be, they're like, oh, I don't feel like I'm invited or not.
No, they'd all be invited, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. It's everybody's interest.
Yeah, and that's a good thing.
Yeah, so I, I did have, I came here one day. Afternoon, spent about hour and a half with Chad, and we went through the needs at both schools.
Okay.
And then we went through the wants, and some of the wants are, if we were going to keep the elementary school, that it'd be nice to do this to these rooms, or we're gonna keep the intermediate school, we want to do this, do that, but for now, with both schools up and operating, there's just a few needs. That should be discussed.
Well, doesn't it be a good meeting to do that? So, um. If you'd like to.
Motion for Scott and Larry, schedule a meeting for the building and grounds committee to meet before the next board meeting.
Ah, that's perfect, good, thank you, Michelle.
You're a good motion maker. Now we need a second.
I second.
Okay, good, we got it going. And the dates you can look at, um, any other discussions? Alright, let's call a vote, all in favor, seeing by the saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The opposition. So then, Scott, you'll get back to our administrator when you figure this out, and then you can get this all over.
Yep.
Great plan.
I'll call him.
I like it. Yeah. And the preliminary budget.
So we sent, or Carrie sent you just a, uh, very short, one-page overview of the budget. Um, the overall, the whole budget looks more like this, and we didn't want to overwhelm you, but it's a.
I have two pages.
It's a book, um, I went back to back. But I, what I wanted to point out is, first of all, um, hardly ever do I know a superintendent that walks into a, uh, interim position and finds that the budget's in very good position. So kudos to the board and the community, uh, you've been running very good budgets over the last few years. Again, as an interim superintendent, I, I, most intrums walk into like, oh, here's, here's the problem. So, with that said, and knowing that I've only worked two weeks with Carrie for this budget, because she's out of town this week, and a pre-approved vacation that she's been on, uh, she and Chad both. So we worked very diligently over the last two years, so, um, I'm gonna start with, we're giving an update in September and give final numbers in October. And although I'm very confident these numbers are correct, I'm still not sure about some of the federal grant numbers that we are gonna get, as well as some of the expenses that I might not know about. Um, and that's one of the reasons I'm gonna go through the budget, then, we are projecting revenues of six million, seven hundred and seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars. Um, at this time, uh, with what we know, and this, these are pretty good numbers, because we know all of our staffing are ready, and salary and benefits are eighty-three percent of your expenses. Um, which is normal for school districts, we're very, I mean, that's where most of the expenses are, it's the teachers.
Right.
Everybody, that's what it is. And our expenses right at this current time are six million, three hundred, five thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars, which gives you a surplus of about four hundred and two thousand dollars. Now, we will not, I can guarantee you, we will not end with a surplus of four hundred and two thousand dollars, because I know several things that are not in there right now. Um, as you know, Act Twenty was passed, um, our language arts curriculum, uh, although very good, is not gonna be able to meet that standard. We're gonna need a specific phonics program. Uh, we have one in place kind of as a, as a holdover, but I'm, I'm gonna recommend, and the, the other districts in our area are doing the same thing, is that we, we pilot some language arts curriculum and purchase a single language arts curriculum that will go from K-fourth through fourth grade, so it's, it's, it's the same all the way through. Um, and that's gonna be a costly expense. When you change curriculum, you're looking at anywhere from sixty to probably seventy thousand dollars when you start buying, and then for all these grade levels curriculum. We still don't have a complete understanding of special education costs. Um, so I think we're right on it with the, our current students, but as soon as that happens, um, someone will move to the district and with the high V's, and we, we just, you know. That's just how it works. Um, and then the building costs that I just talked about, I've talked, I've chatted, chatted with Chad, and he thinks that his budget is good for now, but, you know, just like my own house, I wasn't expecting twelve inches of water in my basement, and having to fix my furnace and water heater and everything else, so something's gonna happen that is gonna raise, raise that.
You should have added him on one more cinder block.
Yeah, yeah, um, so again, currently the budget looks wonderful, and I give kudos to the board and the community for having a great, uh, beginning budget. And I'm very pleased to let you know that right now, a four hundred and two thousand dollar surplus is unbelievable for school districts. Many times in my career, I was looking at a two hundred or two hundred and fifty thousand dollar deficit going, okay, where am I gonna find two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to make this work? Um, so this, you're in a great, uh, position, I'll give you another update in September, and then we'll give you final, final numbers in October.
Does the board have any questions? Now, I noticed that there's curriculum purchases, uh, in different fund, funds.
Yes.
Can you quickly explain that or not?
Each, each curricula has a different, uh, fund number. So science is a number, math is a number, social studies is a number, elementary is a number compared to intermediate.
Okay.
So that's.
Alright.
I think that's where I need Carrie's help. I think they're called wafer numbers, W-A-F-A-R, it's accounting one-on-one, but I never want that accounting one-on-one class.
No other questions? Then we'll move on to the report from our administrator.
Alright, uh, first of all, I just want to go up again, as I've said a couple of times, I've only been here a few weeks. I just want to give you an update on my first impressions. Uh, first of all, just as I just said, thrilled with the district, I do give kudos to the school board. Uh, you ran into a, a pretty significant issue late May, early June, you acted very swiftly and decisively. Um, thanks for hiring me, that's, very happy about that. Um, but you could have been paralyzed and you chose not to be. And you chose to move very quickly and decisively, as I said, and I give you kudos for that, because a lot of boards would have just said, uh, cease the six, just do it.
Well, it's all cold, and we're big on that, do this now, do this now.
Um, so I give you kudos for that. Other things that I'm really impressed with are Chad and Steve and Carrie, not Carrie Smitherman, but the other Carrie, I shouldn't know her last name.
Peter.
Thank you.
Yeah.
What an, unbelievably great job they've done this summer. I, I, one of my first questions to them is like, do you need more help? And the buildings look incredible, and that's the three of them, and that's two large buildings, every room, everything's taken out of the room, the rooms are rewaxed, the rooms are clean, inside and out. And we're ready to go, we're ready for teachers right now, we're ready for students, if students had to come tomorrow, we'd be ready for them.
Wow.
And that's an incredible job by those three. Um, the other Carrie, Smitherman, Angie, Alia, Heather, Brittany, and Jenny, um, they're ready, we have the, the schedules going out tomorrow.
Tomorrow, ten AM, the teacher will get their own personal email.
Our schools, our schools are ready for teachers, they're ready for professional development, they're ready, they're on top of what's going on here. And again, it's August thirteenth, and many school districts, um, aren't this, aren't they?
We don't need you.
Uh, well, I'll give you.
No, I'm not saying that.
I'll give you a few reasons why I'm here to help.
No, I don't, I don't.
But we are ready for our four K open house, which is next week already, and then both schools have open houses on August twenty-eighth. Kids start September secondary, the day after Labor Day, and again, kudos to your people here, because they've done an unbelievable job. Um, as I just told you, our budget is in very good shape, very pleased to see that. I'm really looking forward, my, one of the things I'm really looking forward to is getting to know our staff and our parents and, and students. Um, I have planned, and, and I've already talked to Jenny about this, about sharing my, you guys have my Google Calendar, but really getting into opening my Google Calendar up. I want to have ten to fifteen minute meetings with every staff member here. Um, and I'm gonna make it that, and people like, oh, I don't want to be too, it's just be three questions, I'm gonna give you the questions ahead of time, so you have not, you know, uh, so that you can come kind of with a thought. I'm, I'm really here to be supportive. And then I'm also looking, again, our parents and students, I was able to meet a couple of parents today, uh, for the PTO playground project, I, you know, everybody I meet is such, are so positive. And so I think I, that's just wonderful for me. Um, coming up, uh, over the next couple of weeks, I promised that I will give you a complete grasp of the budget. Um, as I told you in my interview, I plan on knowing this inside and out. Um, you need to understand that you're spending, uh, you know, two hundred and twelve thousand dollars on busing, that's a lot of money. Why? Well, first of all, you stigmatized it, you have to. Um, and I think I shared with you privately, for the last few years, you were getting state aid, that's called, uh, high-cost transportation, and it didn't happen this year. Um, that was a forty-seven thousand dollar loss in revenue, um, to this district, that's a lot of money. And I'm trying, Carrie and I both reached out, trying to find out what happened, was that, did we miss something? trying to find out what happened, was that, did we miss something as a district, was, did we miss a form? Um, there is no form to fill out, they just figured it out from their magic EPI form, now it works. Well, I need to get an explanation, so I can share that with you.
Well, so you're still looking into that.
Oh, yeah, it's, that's, that, that shouldn't happen.
Yeah.
And we're a small district with a big area.
Yeah.
You've always qualified for a high-cost specialty, or not specialty, high-cost transportation. Um, we should, so I'm, I'm going to keep pushing that. Then, as I just said, I really want to get this three-year updated, what we've done and, and what we need to do.
Right.
Um, so that will happen, and then an actual plan for a new playground. I know I met with the PTO today, they raised, um, over seventy thousand dollars. And some of that has to do with, hey, what are we going to do as an entire district? But, um, I have a hard time, I'm sure you do too, asking people for money and then sticking it into this accountant that's just sitting there. People are going to get unhappy about that after an outer rate. So we need to make a plan, and either say, hey, this is what we're going to do, and we're going to get it done, or we're going to say, we don't know what we're going to do, do we, even say, do you want your money back? Because it's not, it's not okay for a district to hang on to that amount of money, make interest on it. And, you know, so that, I'm, we're going to work on this month also.
Okay.
Um, and then finally, the Act Twenty updates, including assessments and the upcoming ELL curriculum, I know that's high on your list also, but I'll be meeting with these guys about exactly, um, we have the assessments already set up, but, you know, what does that mean for our teachers? You know, I need to get a better grasp on that, it sounds like Heather already does, and Angie already does, but I'm bringing that so that people understand what's going on. So that's going to happen in the next couple of weeks.
And you can ask your wife, because she's an administrator too, right?
That's right, she keeps me in line.
Yeah, I didn't say that.
Most of the time. So that's my report, um, and then I'll turn it over to Ms. Hoss.
Thank you, I will go into a little finer detail, um, just because he did the overall, and I'll dive even deeper. Uh, registration went out to families, and that has been completed, I don't, I think we're sitting pretty good with the amount of families that didn't fill it out, and Brittany and Jenny did make those calls, just to do the gentle reminder. Um, Chad and I went to a safety meeting with area schools, um, and Dodge County Sheriff's Department last week, and that was kind of a good eye-opening, as far as probably having more of a safety committee and what we would do in the, you know, God forbid, if anything were to happen, and we had to do like off-site, you know, if there was a school shooter, anything like that, so diving a little deeper into that. So that was very interesting, just to hear what other areas schools do as well. Um, we had six teachers attend, um, attended the mentor training, and will be mentors this coming school year. Um, attended, I attended a managing to lead conference with Brittany Faust, uh, last week, and that was very informative for, uh, both of us to attend. Um, just kind of goes over with how we can utilize Jenny and Brittany a bit more in this role, and giving them more, um, of a leadership role as well. Um, so office staff has been cleverly working together, just during the year, successfully, like Larry mentioned, we have our, every other week, office meetings, um, and those seem to be very successful. Our elementary music position will be filled with our new band and music hire at the intermediate school. Um, we had to get creative with the schedule, but thanks to Brittany, she creatively figured it out. Um, and I've talked with Peter Schneider, who is the new hire at the intermediate, and he's good with it. Um, and then that.
He's the new, he's the new what, I'm sorry?
He's the new, he was the new hire that we hired in spring.
Okay, it was April.
Yeah, I think it was right before you were on. Um, but he was just hired to do full-time, um, band and music over at intermediate.
Okay.
Well, we kind of had to tweak the schedule a little bit, and I talked with him, and he seems good, he seems good with it, so we kind of, were able to figure it out, because it's hard to find, um, a fifty percent music position. I mean, it was very, I don't even think I had that, I don't know why. Um, and I know area schools are also struggling with that as well. Um, and then that leads into our Spanish position, again, that's, that's fifty percent, and we have one candidate, um, that didn't pan out, and we're just looking at the application, it just wasn't a good fill. Um, but then we have Brielle Berg, who is our, she is a pure professional that has her long, or she has her substitute teaching license. So she's going to be a long-term substitute teacher in that position, um, for this coming year. So it's a fifty percent, you know, she'll be working half the day doing that. Um, so in turn, that kind of came down to, we never really had a music or Spanish curriculum, so we did purchase those in June, and that is not expensive like English language arts, it's talking a thousand bucks, maybe fifteen hundred, you know, so it's nothing like, um, English language arts. Um, and then we also did our health curriculum. So, a goal that we have is to, and I checked, uh, Mr. Smalley about this, is to get, um, a cycle going for curriculum. So you're not, you know, like, English language arts, we're looking at this year, next year, maybe it'll be science, or math, or social studies, so then you're on a cycle, so it's not like, oh, all this curriculum do at once. So, um, that's our goal there. Um, and then class lists and schedules are finalized, and will be shared with staff tomorrow. Um, Aleah has, or likes, has been working closely with Holly from CISA six for the director of people services, um, because we had some special ed, um, issues club this summer, and Holly's been great, um, Aleah's been wonderful, um, because she does have that awesome special ed lens as well. Um, and then summer staff newsletter went out, everyone contributed from the office staff, so they each had their own little section, um, to inform staff on what's going on. Um, I'm attending the literacy meeting at CISA six for Act Twenty, because it's an elementary principal, I only need all that training, so I still have two hours of videos on dyslexia to finish watching.
Wow.
Thanks to Ms. Wright for guiding me in that direction, thank you. Um, and then PD schedule for staff, uh, is complete and shared, important dates, um, August twentieth is our new teacher and mentor day. We have two new teachers over at intermediate, so it'll be at the intermediate building on, um, August twentieth, and then their mentors. So we have, um, Georgia Harrison, our five-six math teacher, um, and her mentor is going to be Hannah Lindemann. And then we have Peter Schneider, who's the music and band gentleman, and his mentor is Danielle Goldbach. So they'll, those four will be attending, we have a little meeting type in the morning, and then we're going to take them to lunch, and then they can have some more time.
So is this like the individuals' first?
Yes, so like new teachers, you kind of share different information.
They haven't ever instructed anywhere, is this their first time?
Um, no, they have instructed.
Okay.
So it's more just telling them what they're doing, what we're about, um, because then on the twenty-fifth, then the whole staff comes together.
So they're not green, they're just new?
Yes, yes, exactly. Uh, Peter has been one year, so he's still pretty new.
Yes, yes.
And then the twenty-first is four K, um, info, or the information night for four K, five thirty-seven. Twenty-fifth is professional staff, um, and they'll be here at the El Show, and Mr. Smithman's putting on breakfast, um, for the staff. Um, and then the twenty-sixth, we have Clint Swindell, a speaker, and that's with Perford Area School, so all the Peter schools. Go to Chandelier Ballroom, and he talks about mindset matters, so just that positive mindset, so it's a good kickoff for the year.
Yeah, I've seen him, he's really good.
Yeah, and I have not, so I'm anxious to hear, hear him speak. Um, August twenty-seventh, professional staff, again, is another day, like do a quick, grab a little breakfast forum. And then the twenty-eighth is open house, so we have professional staff, and that's the first day pure professional staff will be coming in, and I'll be doing kind of a separate, um, little meeting with them, just because they're separate from professional staff. And then the PTO is graciously providing lunch, um, for staff that day, since they're, um, they're till, circulate? I think it was four or five?
Yeah.
Yeah. And I have to say thank you to Larry for coming on, it's been amazing, he feels like in our office meetings, he just fits right in, and it was good. So, very good, thank you.
Thank you for your report.
You're going to be busy Beaver too, I think. Almost something every day.
What?
Almost something to do every day.
I know, it, it, one day at a time, right? Is that what we say, one day at a time? Oh my goodness, okay, we'll see what they check off today.
On behalf of the board, uh, thank you to everybody that was mentioned here for everything they've done to get the school ready. Um, whether you're a teacher, community member, uh, take care of updating people on Facebook for us, and you guys come in here month in and month out, also supporting the board. Um, you guys are appreciated, and I'd like us to stand up and give a round of applause.
It's a group effort, no doubt about it.
Awesome.
Thank you very much. I can't take too much for a life that came out of here. But no, that's what our community is about.
We're a great community.
Alright, now it's Ms. Events, who, anybody have any? You gave us a whole ton already.
Yeah.
Yeah. No more, right?
No, I think, I may, I'll remember something afterward.
Okay. Well, then, uh, seeing we've gone through the open session business, I move that we move into adjourned to close session.
One second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. We will do so. Where do we go tonight?
Uh.
Are we going to go in the side room?
Yep, the side room over here, I'm not sure what you call it, but call it the side room.
Thank you, everyone. Do we specialize in that?
So we'll see.
Yeah. Yeah.
We, no, I got. What is it?